And the, I'd like to call the town council meeting into order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Haggenow.
Present.
Councilmember Kerr.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Present.
Councilmember Parmat.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Riley.
Present.
There are seven members present.
Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands one nation, under God, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Did anyone have changes or?
Your honor, if I may, I recommend we pull the resolution 2025-36. I'm in.
Steer.
Steer. We can, I'll bring it back at our next meeting after I have the information from Catapoo.
Then can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the elimination of the skid steer?
Yeah, I so approve with the elimination of resolution 2025-36.
Can you go to the seconded? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item is communications to council. Is there anyone? Nah. Good. If you would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name, your actual to Keystone, where you live, and you have three minutes. And if anyone's online, please, you would like to speak, please raise your hands and let the clerk know that you are, you are waiting and then we'll get to you.
Sorry, is it three minutes? I thought it was five. Okay, I will skip something. Hi, Mayor, and council and staff. I am Chrissy DiGotti. I live at 16 Wayback Drive, Keystone resident. I'm here to bring up an issue that is incredibly frustrating relating to workforce, housing, and transit. Before I begin, I listened into the work session before this meeting and I sincerely appreciate the thought and discussion around the workforce, housing needs of our community. So sincerely, thank you. Back to the topic. With less than two weeks' notice, right before the winter season began, Vale Resorts decided to remove two bus stops servicing workforce, housing neighborhoods in Keystone. The West Hills neighborhood, containing 66 ownership units, and the Winter Green neighborhood, with 196 rental units, ceased bus services on October 6th. I live in the West Hills neighborhood, so of course, this directly negatively affects me as I regularly ride the bus in the winter, usually three times a week. And I was constantly singing the praises of our bus service. Friends, family, and coworkers alike can all attest to how much I loved the bus access and how it made me feel connected to our community. I reached out to Vale Resorts with questions and concerns when I heard, and Vale Resorts stated safety concerns for removing the bus stop. I asked for more details, they were unable to provide any. Our workforce, housing neighborhoods feel like a very vulnerable yet important part of our community, and this is yet another hurdle this community will have to overcome. Many residents of these communities share vehicles or even choose to move to these neighborhoods specifically because of the access to public transportation that is now being stripped away. The West Hills neighborhood, there is zero sidewalk connections and no access to the bike path. The Sunrise Stop, which is now the closest bus stop, is about a mile away. Realistically, it's closer to .8 for technicality. But there are no sidewalks or walking paths. The only option is the road, the very same road that Vale Resorts is claiming is too dangerous to drive busts on. Is this the only solution available for workers to walk about a mile on this road to reach the closest transit stop? The 2023 Summit County Housing Needs Assessment noted that during their public engagement process, many stated the parking situation in particular is particularly challenging in Keystone, where residential parking fees are high, up to a few hundred dollars a month per vehicle in some workforce, housing rental units. A direct quote from a resident was, "We need three workers in the household to afford housing. Everyone needs a car to get to work, but we only have one parking spot available through our rental unit." This leads me to believe that the rest of our community members rely heavily on public transportation, that unfortunately was taken away. Looking at the work session packet from today's earlier meeting, there are 322 units of year-round workforce housing. By removing these two bus stops, Winter Green and West Hills, we have removed the bus stops for 233 of these units, or 72% of the year-round workforce housing available in Keystone. Next, all of our countywide transit needs studies have included these routes. Most recently, our microtransit needs study, completed in 2024, highlights Keystone's robust transit option. But that will no longer be the case moving forward, as the study was based on homes located within an eighth of a mile of the transit stop. And like I mentioned, West Hills will be about a mile now.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to extend the time of public comment by two minutes?
Second. Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
During public engagement for the Keystone Comprehensive Plan, I myself provided great feedback about our transit access, as I was not aware of the lack of transportation looming. I encourage the town to think hard about any transit-related input they receive from our community, as it doesn't feel fully valid anymore. Time and time again, traffic congestion comes up as a major issue and a most common request to fill, and yet Vale Resorts has removed the bus stop, provided no alternative access other than driving more cars on the road and taking up more parking spaces. Note that in the Comprehensive Plan Engagement section of the work session packet from today's meeting, year-round bus service to workforce, housing was identified as a critical infrastructure need. And the 2019 Summit County Housing Assessment said, "Those who are cost burdened are less likely to travel by car and more likely to walk or take public transportation." And I would argue that our workforce, housing is our more cost-burdened portion of our community. Lastly, the Keystone Resort PUD has a transit requirement on page 41, section 26, that is now enforceable by the Town of Keystone, requiring transit service to the Winter Green parcel A. Additionally, in the permitted uses and development plan section of this PUD, there is a goal to enhance the quality of the experience of the residents and visitors in the Keystone Valley by providing and maintaining an efficient, safe, and pleasant transportation system to travel to, from, and within the planned unit development, with a stated objective to provide an attractive, alternative means of transportation for residents and guests, so the personal automobile is not the primary means of transportation within the resort PUD. Please consider my plea to offer transit options for our workforce, housing communities, as this feels like a weird punishment to our workforce specifically. I don't know what that looks like exactly. I understand that you do not control Vale Resorts, but please stand up for our workforce, housing community, put pressure on Vale, get the stops back, or try and find another viable solution for this portion of our community. There's already two really well-covered bus stops at both of the locations. Thank you for your time.
What, I'd like to thank you for your comments and your, your well-researched, look the research that you've done. I know the council has discussed this in the past, and we have uncovered the same issue with Keystone PUD as you have, and are in discussions with Vale Resorts on exactly that topic. I think the council, as I look around to my compatriots, are all strongly in favor of maintaining that existing bus route, and we will do everything within our power to be able to help ensure that it's maintained in the upcoming season.
I know we don't usually respond, but you started. Your, your information was great. It sounded very much like the point paper I submitted to the transit, Summit County's Transit Board, back in the summer. It is an agenda item tomorrow about the bus stop and for, for the 248 households that I've been tracking in that area for West Hills and Winter Green. It's, it's important. It has their attention. We're working with them. We will hopefully have some answers soon. Also, the Transit Board, the county recently decided not to pursue the Regional Transit Authority. I don't know if you had heard of that. Because of that, last month, the Transit Board, we decided to get back on board with coming up with strategies for microtransit, which I think has the best options for this community. That, I couldn't give you an idea of the timeline on, but it's back on the plate. Everybody's interested in getting microtransit going in our community. So, thank you for your points, though.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just that, that I've heard from several of my friends in that neighborhood, this is a huge paid part.
Oh, aye. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the town manager to get that statement for the record, since it seems like it might already be typed out?
Yeah.
To put into the minutes, verbatim?
Um. Um. Um, I, Councilmember Haggenow, it is a very bad precedence to take written comments during the public comment period and put them in the minutes, because then I do not have the authority to tell people.
May I ask the manager to have that sent to us afterwards, so we can review it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Your honor, if, if I may, before we get into the consent agenda, I just noticed last Friday was a very confusing night. We had left AP out of approval in the consent agenda.
Again?
We left approval of the accounts payable out of the consent agenda. I just sent that out to you all via an email. It's pretty straightforward. There's one question in there, a $261,000 payment. That is a return of a cash development deposit that a developer made to us. It was never really our money. It was a deposit to ensure the development got done.
I guess correct.
So I'd ask that you add approval of AP to consent, and if you need time to review the email I just sent out, it's not a very large.
Is there any reason that we can't approve that as a separate action later in the?
No, not at, not at all. No reason not to.
Okay.
I would rather do it in that, that manner later, maybe perhaps in other business.
Okay.
And if we could, could you give us a hard copy? Have someone make a hard copy for, of that? It's only one page.
I just moved to approve the consent agenda, less the other accounts payable list.
No.
Because it's not even in there.
It's not in there, so just move to approve.
It's on the.
Oh, it is there. It is in there. I'm sorry, I am blind.
It's on the agenda, but we don't have the document, right?
And Matty, I don't believe AP was sent out, so you don't have the document. We can move that.
I'm just saying, approve this agenda.
Moving the accounts payable to other business.
Second.
Whatever that was.
Yes. Moved to seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. The next item is a public hearing on ordinance 2025-0-15, which is regarding the Code of Ethics for the town and.
One of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's 0-17, unless I'm reading this.
Thank you. 0-17? Yes. And will the clerk please read the title or subject matter into the record?
Ordinance 2025-0-17, an ordinance of Town Council of the Town of Keystone, Colorado, adopting a code of ethics and establishing penalties and fines for violations thereof.
At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open, and the procedures we're going to be following is, again, having a, a public hearing on consideration of ordinance 2025-0-17 regarding adopting a code of ethics. The following are the general procedures. First, we'll hear your report from the town manager, followed by questions by council members. Then we'll take public comment on the ordinance. Following public comment, the council will be asked if they have any additional questions for staff, and then the public hearing will be closed and the council will deal with it. With that, Mr. Town Manager?
And I will pass this on. I am having computer problems right here. I will pass this on to our town clerk. Madam Seewu, if you give me just a sec, I am having real computer problems. Yeah, I'll be from my computers. The webpage, just the whole agenda packet, everything. It just throws up. Okay, so this is adopting a code of ethics. We've had the first reading and workshop discussion on this, and I will pass this off, I'm sorry, to our town attorney, Jennifer Madsen, to lead us through the staff report.
Right. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of Town Council. Jennifer Madsen, the town attorney. First off, I want to thank Councilmember Martin for his assistance in working through the drafts of this document and his review in this process. So tonight, you're asked to consider on second reading ordinance 2025-017, which would adopt a comprehensive code of ethics for the Town of Keystone. The ordinance establishes clear and consistent standards of conduct for all elected officials, appointed officials, employees, and members of boards and commissions. It does fill the town, the town's Home World Charter requirement that Keystone adopt its own ethics ordinance by April of 2026. The proposed code is designed to promote honesty, integrity, transparency, and accountability throughout town government. It sets forth clear expectations on matters such as conflicts of interest, acceptance of gifts, misuse of position, discrimination, and use of town resources. The code does provide a detailed procedure for disclosures, recusal, and enforcement, which ensures that these issues are handled fairly and openly. One thing to note is that by adopting this local code, Keystone will ma- maintain local control over these ethics issues, rather, rather than relying on the state's independent, independent ethics commission. So what this does is it allows you all to resolve these concerns more efficiently and in a manner that reflects your values and standards. To that end, the ordinance does establish a structured complaint process, offering both accessibility and due process for everybody who is involved. And these provisions in here do align with, with best practices. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Haggenow?
Thank you. So I believe we've kind of touched upon this before, but I wanted to specifically ask about this outside employment and business activity disclosure form, which is on the last page of the document, for anyone trying to find it. Could you just maybe restate this for us? I mean, I think it's well-known, right? I work for Vale Resorts, so I would plan on putting my Vale Resorts affiliation in there, but, I mean, I presume if Carol goes to get a pastry at a Vale Resorts-owned business, she doesn't have to disclose that, right? So where's, where's the threshold of, of severity there?
Well, so there's two, two requirements that we're looking at under the code of ethics. So under the code, there is a section, and I'm trying to find the section number. So it's section six of the Code of Ethics. It's on page nine, and that is the disclosure requirement. The requirement to report to the town clerk your outside employment, outside activities, your service on boards, just for transparency and for knowledge.
You would say material, is right, might be, like, for me to understand that?
It does not say material. So it, I mean, if you have a, if you have a role on those boards, if you're just a, if you're going to a, a board meeting, you don't have to report that.
Okay.
Or is it another example? If you're a member of an HOA, you don't have to report that, but if you're on the board of the HOA, you should report that.
Absolutely, yes.
I guess what's getting me is it says business activity, because, I mean, every single person here probably engages with somebody Vale Resorts, who could be a business activity. So I guess as long as it meets one of those thresholds described in the pages that you called out, would be the only reason we had to fill out this form.
Yes, yes, that's correct. And then, then there's the second question, which I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but the second piece of it is the conflict of interest provision in, in the code. And that is when something, the reason to have this disclosure is so that we.
I, I understand the conflict of interest, yeah. I was just more, this is the, honestly, the first time I'd seen this form, and maybe I just had missed it in the previous iterations.
It, it wasn't in there.
It was not.
This is the first time this form has been.
Thank you for not calling me crazy.
And really, it's, it's something that was provided as a courtesy. Matty could really tweak this form in whatever way that she wants, so that it, it meets a requirement of the code.
Perfect. You've answered my question. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kerr?
So I want to ask about participation in nonprofits that have nothing to do with this town and never would, rather than get into nitty-gritties. Do you recommend we just put everything in there?
Yep.
Okay.
If you're a member of the nonprofit board.
That would, no, that's different. Yeah, that's clear.
But if, if you weren't a member of a nonprofit board, then you would have nothing to report on that nonprofit.
Right, but it, even if it doesn't have a connection, you don't, yes, just disclose.
And over backward transparency.
If you're on the board, if you're just a member in their general membership.
Right.
A board on a company that's nothing to do with Keystone?
Yes.
I would just disclose it.
Okay.
Yeah, that takes away any discretion as to relationship with Keystone.
Okay.
If, if, if you have issues or have questions about it, I'm happy that we can talk through it, so if something comes up.
Yeah, one issue I've dealt with in homeowners' associations is if you own stock in Vale Corporation, should you disclose that?
And what if it's direct versus indirect, right? Like, I don't necessarily know what all my funds, every single large corporation stock owns.
Yeah.
I would assume it's direct.
Is that a, is that a safe assumption?
Well, that, I don't know with the HOA rules.
No, no, I mean, if I did.
No, yes.
If I own a mutual fund.
No, you don't not need to disclose that.
Put it here, folks.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Like any other questions, then we will proceed with the public comment period. And again, public comment's going to be less limited, three minutes per speaker. Please line up behind the podium. When it's your turn to speak, please say your name and where you live, own or work. Either the council or the town manager will answer questions or respond to your comments during the public comment period. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public comment period. And again, ask council, do you have any additional questions for the manager or staff?
I have a comment. I forget, is there any comment period?
Not yet.
Okay.
This is the question period. All right. Therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we are now, council will now have open discussion and eventually look to some sort of a motion. Again, would anyone like to make a comment? Councilmember Haggenow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to give a, a big thanks to Councilmember Martin and our attorney for the effort that you put into this. I know I typically have questions for almost everything, so thank you for bearing with me on that, but I think that it was a very great ordinance, and I, I appreciate that this keeps the local control over a very important matter like this. So thank you both.
Other comments? I have to concur with the Councilmember Haggenow. I think this ethics ordinance is an extremely important ordinance for our town, because it does set the standard of, of how we interact on issues that can potentially impact us personally or impact organizations that we partially or do control. So again, thank you, Councilmember Martin, and you, Ms. Madsen, for your work on this. I'd also be remiss if I didn't also include a thanks to ex-councilmember Thisted, who I believe worked on this prior to her resignation from council as well. So, can I have a motion then?
Sure. I may move to approve resolution 2025-36. I'm sorry, that's a skid. Okay.
What now?
Okay, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2025-017, an ordinance of the Town Council of Keystone, Colorado, adopting code of ethics and establishing penalties and fines for violation thereof.
Second. Moved to seconded. Any discuss, further discussion or debate? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Haggenow.
Approve.
Councilmember Kerr.
Approve.
Councilmember Martin.
Approve.
Councilmember Parmat.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Approve.
Mayor Riley.
Approve.
There are seven votes to approve.
Thank you. Next item is report of town manager, as county manager, any?
Do we want to be? There are no planning matters to discuss anymore. After the workshop, I'll give a, a quick update on police. You'll be getting the budget for that, and November 11th, expect to have a discussion with chief, if there's anything in the budget that is in answer before then. Plus, we'll have him talk about flock cameras. I did look into your concerns, and the problem appears at Longmont. It's who they allowed to access it, and they allowed any police force nationwide to access it, and a bunch of Texas local police departments were doing flock requests on behalf of ICE. And that, that's what the issue was with that.
We should probably be aware that that's something.
If we allow national, if we allow national, if it's limited to state access, it's against the law for.
Understood.
Yeah. But I'll let chief explain that all November 11th, when he talks about those and talks about Avis cameras a bit. The reason speed limits weren't on the agenda this week was there were just some legal questions that the attorney brought up, that we've worked out, we'll be bringing speed limits at the next meeting for approval.
Quick question on speed limits. I know this might sound crazy, but like, I, I was thinking about speed limits when I was doing a walk of our neighborhood, Loveland Pass Village, with a resident, and they said, "Speed limits have been here for 35 years," right? And I don't know if that was an exaggeration, but is there any, like, it was swatters, right? After 10 years, they can keep the house or something. Is there any, like, "It's been 20 years since the speed limit signs up," it, it like takes, it becomes law? Yeah, it is, it become law?
I have no idea what signs I'm about to go put up.
I think it, it sounds crazy to even ask that, but like, I just, it, it came up when we were kind of walking around the neighborhood.
I'll defer to our attorney on this, but.
I, I'm not exactly sure. So a speed limit sign is up?
It's been up for.
A personal sign that someone.
Oh, okay.
Supposedly 35 years.
That's a real thing. Okay, well, that is not enforceable. Yes, that is not.
Mr. Town Manager, it occurs to me after some discussion, and especially after hearing the comments at the start of our meeting about safety issues and our discussion over on, about the speed limits for Hitler's Gulch. As we bring that back around at the next meeting, do we want to ask the question, if there is indeed a safety issue, if our proposed speed limits are going to address that? If that impact is a safety issue? And if they're not, if there's something that we could do around that that would address that safety issue and overcome the objection?
Our proposed speed limit was 25 miles an hour on that road.
Was it that high? I thought it was less.
No. No. And I agree with you. I, I think we should probably, um, not do a consent first reading of this. We can discuss.
Absolutely.
Some of the specific.
I'd assume that's probably what we're going to be doing anyway.
Would it be possible to ask the manager and mayor during their next conversation with leadership, um, from Vale to try to get an understanding of what the safety concern was?
Oh, not only that, I have the PUD, I have the plat dictate, I, I have all sorts of things. We are definitely.
Cause if, if the speed limit is being knocked down to 25, boom, but I have a feeling it's going to be.
I suspect the problem isn't there. I suspect the problem is at the exit on the other end going back into tennis club, but we don't know.
Sure.
We've asked, we asked for that. We have not received that info and that will be on the discussion.
Yes. On the planning matters too, can we get a draft, a copy of the change order that's going to come through from SE group for the increase in, uh, costs or budgeted costs for next year, whenever that does come?
Yeah, whenever it comes, you'll.
Okay.
Definitely get it and, uh, and this is anticipated. There's not.
Understood.
No. Budgets, just because it's in there, doesn't mean it's being spent. Let me see, where was I? Huh. I can't believe I didn't start out this with, uh, our superstar, the absolute best clerk in the state of Colorado, Adeline Seerloo, uh, last Thursday night was awarded by the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association Clerk of the Year. Now, their other awards are broken out in small, middle and large municipalities, not Clerk of the Year. She's the only one. She is it. I can't think of anyone more deserving. Uh, the mayor and I went down for her awards banquet and I'd never been to the Pueblo Depot. It is a heck of a neat building and little area there, a little shout out to Pueblo. But, yeah.
So how many clerks are in this state? I don't know. Every municipality has to have one.
Yeah. One or two.
At least.
Yeah, we are just, it, as I said to Maddie at the meeting, I'm so proud of her. And then actually I said, actually, I'm really proud of the Municipal Clerks Association for recognizing what is clearly the only possible choice for this award.
Agreed.
So, um, we're so lucky.
Impressive and deserved.
Yes. Maddie was appropriately surprised. Her first clue was when the town manager and I appeared at dinner. Then she was trying to figure out what award was it? And she just, her name was never called. And there was the last award. Again, congratulations.
That's definitely, that's exciting.
It was, it was, it was pretty special for me.
I know. That's good.
And I would like to ask that you include, I know you have a number of pictures that you, you have taken, uh, that were taken that evening, of you include, uh, a picture and a write-up in the email that goes out to the residents. I think this is very important to recognize. And you may want to put a press release out to the Summit Daily as well about the, the award.
We, I absolutely planned on that, so, um.
And, and include in that press release, she's not available for hire for.
We did get to meet Gabby's mom at the banquet too. Um, anyone who ever meets Gabby's mom will know they have met Gabby's mom. So, it, it was just very special. Um, Public Works, we are signing all the contracts for snow plowing.
Are we on your report now? Do we go from planning matter to town?
Yeah, we're still town manager.
It's just town manager's report.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, yeah, there were no additional planning matters.
He jumped ahead.
It's, but.
Senator Crown, it, when you're, you're talking about the plow, plowing contracts, uh, we had asked if you could look into the cost of plowing the, um, rec cen, rec path, community path, whatever we call it this winter, is that still pending or will that be?
That's under the Skidstone purchase.
Okay.
Yeah. Public Works or me or someone, it's not, you wouldn't take that long to, to plow the path.
So you do think that's feasible?
Yes.
Cause there's been a lot of interest from the community.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Real quick, um, when you say the, the rec path, do you mean from town bounds all the way down to the far side? Or is there only certain areas that we'd be looking to plow?
Um, we, I'd actually discussed this with you guys.
Before we made.
What we, before I make a plan to plow, last year I brought it up and it was decided we didn't need to plow anything, but this is a discussion I'll bring up, uh, next meeting.
And Vale Resorts right now plows from the condo check-in all the way to mountain house into lakeside of KNC plows everything on the east side of, of the resort for the rec path.
So it would really just be this stretch down to, um, Elk Circle.
And then if we do that, we probably then need to anticipate, uh, that we'll be expected to either reimburse or take on the broader responsibility across the entire rec path from a fairness standpoint.
Thanks.
I think that, uh, at the last, uh, Trails and Open Space meeting, this topic came up to discuss what portions of the rec path were seen as useful and necessary to plow, what portions of the rec path might even be better off left unplowed or groomed because they are connector points in the cross-country skiing network and snow shoeing network.
And I believe the manager brought up, uh, when he was initially talking about it.
I guess, could you ask the, uh, Trails and Open Space Committee to give us a recommendation of what rec paths, what portion of the rec path needs to be, needs?
Yeah, and, and this, it's, it's not like a road. Um, it can be covered with snow for a while and it's going to be a slight inconvenience. It's not going to shut down.
Okay.
But I, I would still like the recommendation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm saying that the, yes, I agree 100%.
And with that, can you include which areas we can dictate snow coverage or not? Like if it's a privately owned sidewalk, I don't think we can dictate that it's not plowed.
Rec path is all public.
Okay.
All we're talking about is the rec path.
That's all ours, even where it goes through River and Village.
Even where it goes through private areas?
Or mountain house and.
Oh, it does, there's a right of way on all of that.
Okay.
Or an easement or whatever.
Yeah. Some legal right of us to.
Okay.
Make sure it's successful. Usually I write up this report this afternoon. I apologize for my haphazard way of going about it. I have more important things going on, although nothing is more important than my town council. Let me see, we, uh, Excel, um, we're moving forward with the, uh, Mountain Energy Project. I'm on the, uh, NPA Board, which is the, uh, Preferred Alternatives, um, that's that $50 million fund, um, that they'll use to offset things. So we have a seat at the table for the implementation of the Mountain Energy Plan, uh, which is a very good thing. As councilmember Kerr said, there's some questions about, uh, the summit stage that not only adding a stop down there, but some other questions. Vale Resort is, um, still trying to work out a situation where Arapaho Basin people do not park in Manazuma Lot and take the bus up to Arapaho Basin. So we're, we're still working on things like that. We've, I broached, um, issues with the PUD with Shannon. Their lawyers were supposed to get in touch with you, but they haven't yet. So I will kind of press how important it is for Vale Resorts to please get in touch with our attorney so we can set up meetings between our attorneys, Shannon, myself and the mayor and anyone else they feel is necessary to discuss, uh, aspects of the PUD, um, that we've discussed before.
Are these the ones that were discussed in?
Um, definitely going to be talking about transit and getting the bus service. PUD explicitly requires, as we heard, that they provide the same level of service to, uh, Winter Green as they do to any employee housing within the town, within the Keystone PUD.
And I will be personally pushing as hard as I can to get that to also include the current route, which includes, uh, West Hills and Atlas Gulch.
Yeah, it only makes sense, actually.
Only makes sense.
Yeah.
I've dealt with Vale Resorts on bus stops before and, um, we got Atlas Gulch added after they initially decided to drive a bus through there, but not stop.
Um, the, uh, Board of Directors for the Keystone Center last week, uh, approved the LOI for the purchase of this building, the lease purchase by the town of Keystone. They also, in their approval, gave Christine Scanlon the ability to sign, um, the actual true legal documents reflecting that without going back to the board. We will have to have two meetings, including, not we will have to, we do have to, but we should anyways. We'll have two meetings discussing this, um, because we will have to pass an ordinance to approve the purchase of the building. So we will have opportunity for anyone, uh, to weigh in on that. Um, I'll be bringing that forth at our next meeting too. Um, it was all under the terms we had previously discussed. Um, I think it's a good deal.
Will that actually, excuse me, be a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Will there be any additional, um, noticing required or, uh, communication strategies to ensure, I mean, the, the, the question strives from this is a significant, probably more so than any of our decisions, investment or possible investment by the town. Um, will there be additional resources put into trying to reach out to the community to get feedback and/or is there any additional requirements since it's purchasing or we're not purchasing, right? We're agreeing to a lease purchase?
Yes. No, there won't be additional reach out because to tell the truth, our reach out is pretty darn good. We email everyone on the list. We, uh, post it on the website. We discuss it publicly at meetings like this beforehand. Uh, the only additional outreach that I could see us possibly doing is an ad in the Summit Daily, um, which are not necessarily cheap, but it, it's not necessarily a good precedence either. This, this is a large purchase. This is not out of the ordinary. So it's not like we're purchasing something that, uh, a Skidzart, um, are, are something that is outside the general municipal practices.
Could it not be listed, listed with the meetings that Maddie already puts in notifications?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I suppose to pay him for a separate ad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And other than that, the only other way is literally knocking on doors. So we will do as, we will do extensive outreach, letting people know that this is happening.
It stems from several community members being very vocal about, um, the process for this. And so I want to make sure that there is not any conceived avoidance of a public and thorough process.
Yeah, I mean, discussion publicly at three meetings is not avoiding the public process. But I agree with you that, and I've sat down and had a.
Understood.
Discussion with some of the most local people about the situation. They just didn't understand the rules and laws of Colorado and the reason why when you're making a property purchase, you have to be, you have to be discreet originally. Otherwise, you're risking the ability, you're risking some developer swooping in and trying to make money off the city by purchasing the building and then holding out for an extra million to buy from that developer. So, um, let me see what else I've got here. We've got just our kind of regular slew of meetings coming up over the next several weeks. Our next meeting is a declared holiday, um, by the town, um, Veterans Day. I can think of no better way to honor the veterans in our midst than to allow them to participate in good municipal governance. In the model of Cincinnati, in the model of Cincinnati. If there's.
I feel honored.
You know, I, I've told staff we're going to, even though it's a holiday, we'll be working that day if the council is fine going to add with the meeting on that day and we'll give them a rolling holiday somewhere else to make up for it. Um, and then I guess discussion on, uh, we have two meetings, uh, one Thanksgiving week.
November 25th.
November 25th, and I believe our December meeting is scheduled for the 23rd. It's, uh, something like this. I'll pull my calendar here. And, uh, I'm, you know, I kind of want to get through, we have a lot of things, November 11th. I can see us easily being able to skip the November 25th meeting. I think we need to wait until the November 11th meeting to make that decision. I think we can go ahead right now. If the council feels and we'll, we'll bring it up. I don't know if we have to have a resolution to.
I would rather wait until we have an approved budget to just before we, you know, the 23rd is, is too late anyways.
Well.
Yeah, so if we don't approve the budget, we'll have, yeah, we'll have a special meeting.
Remove my objection.
So I, I think there's no question we can not do December 23rd. And I think at November 11th, we'll discuss November 25th.
I think you and staff have done a super job in laying out the budget early enough for us to have plenty of time to think about it, talk about it, ask questions. So I'm feeling, feeling very confident.
Did, now ask the attorney the question, uh, do we just make a thumbs up, thumbs down or, or do we need a, do we need a formal vote? Do we need a resolution?
I, I like resolutions.
All right.
For canceling a meeting, I think it's.
So what I'll do is I'll bring a resolution. We'll put it at the end of the November 11th meeting and we can put both fates in it if that's.
Yeah.
It works out, so. And that's all, that's all I've got.
Councilmember Kerr.
Oh, well, we're still on the town manager report. I want to appreciate the follow-through you've created for roadwork this week, this year. You, uh, on behalf of a few constituents, I've brought to your attention constantly the West Keystone, uh, intersections. Well done and the striping. It will make a difference this, I, I know it's late in the season, but you got it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, a report of mayor and council. Does any member of council have a report?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark.
Um, approximately three weeks ago, Lindsay and I went to the landfill to check out the new recycling center that's been set up. Uh, it's pretty impressive. As you first come into the gatehouse, it's over to your right, uh, fenced in area. But we were there primarily at, um, the request to check out their new million dollar, um, recycling, uh, machine that chews up wooden pallets into mulch. And, um, what happens is it's like a mini, uh, milling machine on the street. Still pretty big, but they dump the pallets in, they go through the conveyor. Uh, there's one conveyor belt that spits out the mulch and then there's a opposite direction, um, conveyor belt magnetic to take out the nails and anything in it. And what they have the ability to do is hook up a tank to color this mulch so they can, uh, have different colors with the goal being that they will eventually sell this mulch to contractors, uh, homeowners in there. So they're trying to reduce the scrap waste that's going into the landfill. And I think when Lindsay asked, I think 2072 or 2078 is when that landfill is scheduled, uh, to be filled, full, so.
Yeah, at which point everything gets trucked to Denver or the front range.
Do we have a meeting that day?
Which I, I think I'd, I'd add a thought on that, uh, and a concern that I, I would like to reflect off of that back to town manager.
off of that back to town manager. And that is that there's a lot of efforts around trying to ensure that that landfill has a longer life. And in fact, I believe there are regulations that have been passed to prevent transshipping even when it's cheaper. However, I fail to understand how that's necessarily to the benefit of this community. And you might ask, well, okay, you're going to expend some environmental cost on transshipping trash, but I would like to point out that we live downwind of that. And as I have the privilege frequently to drive home over Swan first thing in the morning, coming home from hospital, I get to see the backlight reflecting through the dust plumes that come out of that. And I think they're in violation of method nine. I am not trained on method nine. I'm not an EPA expert, but there are federal rules around dust and visible emission regulations. And I really think that we ought to be reaching out to scrap about using water trucks to knock that dust down because it goes one place, right from there, right to here, right in here. And that's a health concern I have.
What do you propose?
I propose that town manager speak with scrap leadership about whether they are method nine compliant and what mitigation methods they can use, such as using water on those dirt roads when they have so much heavy vehicle traffic there.
Well, no expert in method nine, but the Google search and co-pilot has, has co-piloted me talking about the EPA regulations. But I do think that councilmember Parmet's point about the landfill being a little bit more on our radar is definitely one that I would like to echo. I think that there are dozens of unknown consequences that could possibly come from an area where we dump our waste, being on our backyard. And, you know, again, no expert, but I just think it should be something we keep, keep in the front of our mind.
And I do have some pictures that show that the opacity is well over 20% of that would be useful for you.
Will you talk to the county manager?
Absolutely.
That really is a vehicle to go in through him.
Okay.
Thank you. Report back to us at the next meeting. Any other, again, we're talking about reports of council and mayor. Any other reports of, like from the cocktails of council or things like that?
Two items then. Number one, I don't know if we decided on the November 3rd. Is that cocktails or is that coffee?
We seem to have a consensus that was the next time we should do that. We'll wait till there's more snow to put up to our.
Chairlift.
Okay, so, well, to that point then, logistics, November 3rd, we need, I'm available, so I need a second.
Where and when are we doing it?
We don't.
We don't know. We'd asked if the staff could look into that.
Eventually you can find us a place for, here with council.
The only place that is open and able to host is steep, and they've offered that Monday, Tuesday, or the following Monday. So it's the 3rd, 4th, or the 10th, in case you needed options.
Well, I prefer we stay with the same date.
With the plan.
So that'd be the evening at steep on 6, right?
6:00 PM on the 3rd. Yeah.
Councilman Dan, I can do that.
I think the whole point of this is that we can have councilmembers who are not normally able to go in the park, so.
I'll let you.
That's great.
Oh, you, I think it's.
Not talking anybody out. Last time we did the one over at Nowhere Pizza, number of councilmember?
The last time we did an evening when we needed three councilmembers.
The last, oh, that's, no, that's my. Last time we had booths, we had more councilmembers than you.
I didn't want to draw that conclusion out loud.
Okay, well, it'll be on the, so I guess we can have as many, we have at least two. So, okay.
And thank you for asking, Steve, and everybody else.
Just to let you know, I appreciate the resolution passed on the postal service. I copied Congresswoman Boebert's office, who's helping us with the, has got legislation on the zip code, and senators, pick and look for who's assisting us on, trying to get enhanced delivery. And then I also copied our district director in Denver. So just FYI.
Any other report? Councilmember Haganow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had my report pulled right up, and I'll go back and find it, I guess. The CML Policy Committee meeting was held a couple of Fridays ago, and specifically there was, there was a few votes on items there, but the three that we had previously talked about for the CAST initiative all did pass. I apologize, I'm trying to get the exact details that I took on this. Yes, so the STR rental tax passed 60 to 1, so almost unanimous. Vacancy tax passed 54 to 5, almost unanimous. The transfer fee one was the most contentious, passing 43 to 18. The opposition mostly stemmed from possible impacts on military communities and affordability. And then some communities felt that this would be supporting a skirt around Tabor, which they believed the legislative had been, been doing previously, and that CML had advocated against that, and so it was kind of hypocritical. But needless to say, the three cast priorities that we had talked about in length did pass CML, so they are going to be moving forward with CML support with their relatively.
Goes to the board next.
Goes to the board. But, but it's moving along, I guess. And Carol, or Councilmember Curry, do you have anything else?
Thanks. Appreciate you.
Any other reports? We have coming up of two homeowners associations meetings that we are, have been invited to speak at. The first is November 5th at 6:00 PM. It's a virtual meeting, and it is for Ironwood. And right now I have myself and the town manager attending. Would anyone else like to attend? The second one is on November 15th. It's a 9:00 AM virtual meeting, and it's with Tennis Town Home, so that's a larger association. Right now, I plan to be there is, or attend. Are you available, Mr. Town Manager?
Let me just check my.
Normally, I would have asked you earlier.
Let me check my schedule. I think I most likely am going to be available.
I probably could, if that helps.
Yes, I'm available.
Let me know if you need me.
I'll put you down as well.
What time was that?
That is at 9:00 AM. And that's all I have from a report standpoint. Now, any others before we move on? The next item is other matters, and I think we had, one of the other matters we were going to consider is the payables, accounts payables list. I do have one question on the payables list. Is the Summit Foundation $18,500 that's listed as a donation? There's actually two components of that.
Yes.
And I would like to see that in the version we approved that actually shows the portion that's a donation and the portion that's the employee incentive.
Good question. My understanding was that it is all a donation, and then you get an incentive for part of that donation?
Um.
Or do, does a portion go towards a physical product?
A portion of it, you are able to write, if I were a personal individual and had taxes, I would be able to take, I can't remember whether it's 15,000 or 15,500. I can't remember which one it is, as a donation deduction on my taxes, and the other $3,000 would.
Is a purchase of a product.
Is a purchase of a product.
Okay.
So.
That would signify.
But, so you could move approval with directions to the finance director to make sure that that's properly reflected in our finance records.
Did anyone else see any change?
I just had a question. On that big item you brought up earlier, the extended driven development, it says partial. Did we get that money at one point in the work? Yes, it was like 400 or 440,000 dollars. And so the partial, so are we going to see another expense beyond this? Well, I hope so. This says partial. I hope so.
If they meet the needs of.
If they, if they meet the requirements.
And if not, then do we spend that money to finish the needs of the requirement?
Gotcha. Just wanted to ask. But I anticipate that they've been good. I anticipate that they will get their full. Who, you, we review that, somebody reviews that. Yes, yes, Lindsay. Lindsay does, okay.
Councilmember McCurry.
Good question. I know we've said this before, but I'll write it down this time. How are we, how are we billed for the 911 center? Is it a flat rate? Is it based on our population? Is it based on calls?
I believe it's based on call.
Okay, so past call value.
Yes.
So that, okay.
And we can double check with chief at next meeting on that. I'll make sure to call. Sure, yeah.
Okay, so that would account for some STR related calls, no doubt. Okay, thank you.
With the P card purchases, I presume, like, I presume like there's a variety of things that get put under there. Do those end up being counted out into their categories? So, and I'm just hypothetically, let's say you spend $100 on office supplies, would those end up getting like reaccounted?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer you a motion?
Please.
I would move to approve the accounts payable list as presented with the direction for staff to adjust the Summit Foundation donation to be in accordance with the actual regular donation and the purchase of goods, services, or products.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion's carried. All right, any other, other business? Councilmember Kerr.
I wanted to share with you some information I received. This morning, I listened in on the Board of Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners meeting. They conveyed, convened a special meeting with all entities in the county that have anything to do with distributing food or money for food. The idea was to brainstorm strategies to backfill some of the food shortages. You have no doubt heard over and over that millions will move SNAP as of the 1st of November. So the question is, what's the local impact? There are 600 households in Summit County who will lose SNAP benefits that amounts to about 226,000 a month. Additionally, they are apparently uncertain whether WIC will also be paused. If it is, there are 603 women, infants, and children who rely on that. Critically, that includes 13,000 monthly for formula purchases. So in the room was SNAP, WIC, FERC, Smart Valleys, Mountain Dreamers, and others, I couldn't remember when I was making my notes. Among the things they discussed was how to, what, what amounts of county money could be made available for this, what other ways they could approach pulling in money and distributing money. And one of their critical concerns was to be fair and ensure there's not a lot of duplication just because one person might know how to use several systems. So the concept they came up with, which is a little bit loose right now, but I wanted you all to know, the county's going to cover the formula, at least for the first month. And they're going to make an initial contribution, unknown, to kickstart a countywide fundraising drive. FERC will take in the funds. They're not going to actually run the fundraising. They'll just be the clearinghouse for the donations. So we should be seeing a lot of requests to private individuals, and I would anticipate we might want to talk about that in two weeks, or whenever our next meeting is. I'm not making any recommendation. I just wanted to make you all aware that if we were concerned two weeks ago about the impact on housing, that will be a keen impact on food security as well. Last point, they mentioned this several times, $1 in cash, $1 in cash is more valuable than one donated can. Keep that in mind, because everybody likes to give things, but they can buy more with that dollar, and it precludes their storage problems. So if you have any questions to ask, let me know afterwards. But it's a little late, but I'm, I'm sure they were waiting and hoping something would happen with the government shutdown. And when that doesn't seem to be apparent, the commissioners decide it was time to get everybody involved. More involved.
And if I may weigh in on that, at the managers' meeting, actually, one of the big items of discussion was the county budget. And SNAP came up, and the county, as we all know, is under severe financial pressure. It will take the community stepping up to do this, but as this is being put together, the county is prepared to make sure that SNAP benefits go forward, at least in the very short term.
Yeah, the concern is this initial phase, you know, that it'll take time to get things going, and they want to make sure that people aren't hungry on 1st of November. Also, you've heard that Colorado, that the governor has decided to spend state money on food banks. That money's going to go to, they call it the Big Five Food Banks. FERC will get some from that, but, and a statewide strategy is important, but it's not going to replace SNAP.
Yeah, 10 million when we're a quarter million a month here in Summit County alone.
So it's our community. We should understand it.
One question, at the, whenever the government shutdown ends, assuming it does, will the federal government then backfill those?
No, they made it clear they will not backfill the states. And I expect the discussion this morning is if they're not going to backfill the states, they're not going to backfill the counties.
Yeah, I was hoping the answer was yes.
Sure.
And so then the county would get reimbursed the dollars.
And we can still hope that, but I wouldn't.
I wouldn't.
They're just not counting on that.
I understand. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, other business? Councilmember Haganow.
Thank you. I know the mayor and manager are aware of this, but I put a little proposal together for them, a community focused micro event, if you will, based off the Wake Up Rack event. That is a pretty successful local community event, and I proposed and have kind of asked the manager to look into the feasibility of this. And I think that ironically, I put together this proposal before we had the presentation from our, from our consultants today, but I think that this is a perfect example of one of those micro events that isn't a massive tourist driver, isn't a massive festival, but instead would be focused on the local community and engaging the local community. So I'm excited to see where that goes, and I guess if anyone has any input or perspectives on that, that, that conversation is happening, or I hope it's happening, and so wanted to just bring that up.
The conversation happening.
Marketing group, the marketing committee should be involved in that.
Part of my proposal was to work with the marketing committee on that, so.
You should, whatever you have.
Very, very high level. And again, I didn't send this to everyone because of open meeting laws. So it was basically to look at the Wake Up Rack event, see if we can replicate that, you know, in Keystone here. The idea behind a Wake Up Rack event is like first tracks for the mountain, the mountain's getting ready for the winter season, the winter is kicking off, and it engages like coffee shops or cafes, and it would also drive, hopefully would drive business to some of those establishments. But it would be kind of a community focused event that hopefully get people into establishments and then onto the mountain.
Could I ask the town manager, please send that out to all the councilmembers so they can see the proposal? And can you also make sure that that goes also to the marketing committee?
Yes, we have a meeting this.
Next week.
Next week.
And if you have not received the request to do yet another survey on marketing, it's right on the front page of our website. Thank you.
Talking about the one from the destinations.
Yeah, what are, what are your? Yeah, what are, what are your views on tourism?
I have one last thing for new business, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I wanted to ask, I know we had talked about this previously in a couple of passings, but a moratorium on STRs in certain communities, I was hoping for more of a formal proposal that we could look at and, and discuss and debate in a meeting. It continues to be brought up by folks in my community, and I think that it would be good to at least talk about that in a public setting with some actual data and, and legal insight into what we could or could not do. My approach to this, if I were to support anything, would be no longer than our formal review of the zoning, which comes with the comp plan, as at least a starting point. But I think that we have heard a lot of feedback from constituents on the lack thereof, sometimes action in certain communities, and I think it's important that we at least can have these conversations, debate it in a public forum, where we can then point to why the decision was made to act or not to act, instead of just avoiding even talking about it. So, I guess I, at this point, I'd ask for, I don't know, maybe like a thumbs up.
My concern right now.
Sure.
Is if you look at our schedule right now, between now and the end of the year, we can meet on the 25th and do it, we can meet on the 23rd of December and do it. There's no time on any of those three meetings that we have left between now and the end of the year to discuss it.
And, and I completely get that, and I, and I mean this with all due respect, but the schedule has been a constraint since April. And the fact that we haven't been able to talk about something that we continually get public comment on and we continually hear from our constituents on, I think is doing a disservice. And if it means we need to spend an extra 45 minutes one meeting, count me in.
It's not going to be a 45 minute discussion.
Then maybe we limit it to 45 minutes. We just need to stop, in my opinion, we need to stop saying the schedule's the constraint on why we can't talk about an important issue like this.
If I can weigh in, I think this definitely should wait till the comp plan is done and approved. Absolutely wait, because it, it drives it. I wish you would forward those comments on to me so I could put them together and analyze them and distribute to your other commissioners. So, when you get comments, when you get emails, because I have received.
They're verbal comments.
Okay, personally, I have only received comments, and I'm not denying this, saying, "Good God, don't in any way limit STRs in Keystone," when I go to the various HOA meetings. It, it.
It's one.
Just forward, just forward those on. Tell them to email me. If they give you a verbal comment, tell them to email the town manager.
I don't think that you need an email in order for us to have this discussion that has been brought up repeatedly. And this has been a concern brought up at repeated meetings in the neighborhood that we're talking about, and we do hear verbal discussions, and we don't need to say, "Well, why don't you email the town manager about that?" This has been brought up and discussed, and it's not that anyone in this room hasn't been aware about this. And there's always been a reason not to discuss it, and I, I think at this point, we're trying to overcome the objection, because there's always some reason not to discuss it.
And I just want to be clear, by, by no means am I sitting here advocating for any sort of moratoriums. I'm advocating for having a discussion. And, and every time this gets brought up, we say, "Let's push it till after the comp plan," and then people complain that we're not doing anything to protect the neighborhood until after the comp plan. Like, so, we just need, again, I'm not advocating for, for actually doing anything, like, with a moratorium, but I would like to at least talk about it, put it on the agenda, allow people to comment on it.
So, if, if I may, is, are these comments coming from just one neighborhood?
Yes.
Because that makes this discussion a much easier discussion than saying, "Let's talk about an STR moratorium in Keystone," because I will have people breaking down my door to tear me apart if we have that discussion.
And I do apologize, in my little two sentences that I typed out, "I, into a targeted moratorium on certain neighborhoods until full review of the comp plan and zoning impacts can be completed," was what I had initially kind of thought out.
Okay, so is this, and my assumption is we're talking Loveland Pass Village and Aaron's neighborhood. I'm not sure what you call your neighborhood.
Worse some, but.
So, that's it.
Comments that I've heard have been from LPV and not so.
Okay, so, to me, that's, we can see what we can, how we can try to squeeze.
Just options, right? Is it even legal for us to do it? Is it?
Yeah.
I don't think anyone is suggesting a moratorium for all of Keystone. That would be beyond nuts. But I think that that neighborhood, because it doesn't have the ability to self-regulate, like, say, my neighborhood has a HOA, and most neighborhoods have an HOA, they're looking to the only group that can regulate it to have a discussion and hear their, their needs. And whether we then see it worthy to take action, I don't know. But the, the request to discuss it has been brought up repeatedly.
I'd be, given what I know, three meetings that we have, those are going to be very busy meetings.
And I'd be okay to put a preemptive limit on it.
Well, right now, as you've seen through our work sessions, we never get through all the items on the work session. This would, the appropriate place to discuss this would be a work session within an hour for public comment. So, I, I would recommend, if we want to do this, we do it on the 25th of November. As I see, we have nothing scheduled for that meeting.
Can, and instead of, instead of boiling out where it would be, can we maybe agree to try to have this conversation the next several meetings? Whether we're super efficient in the next couple of work sessions and we can add it to it or not, like.
I, I think it's important that this be.
Ironed onto a specific day?
Yeah, that the people who are most concerned about this understand it's.
I think it's also important that specifically, since we're looking at Loveland Pass Village, that we also make sure that the, all of the residents in Loveland Pass Village are aware we're having this discussion, so both sides of that equation can be heard.
Understood.
Because I know I have heard comments from other residents in Loveland Pass, Loveland Pass Village who would absolutely oppose a moratorium.
So, Joan, can I ask, how is something like this going to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, right? We talked about needing, you know, affordable, we're not supposed to use that anymore, affordable housing, right? And how that could be part of this kind of master plan, this short-term.
This wouldn't need to be.
So.
This wouldn't need to be in the comp plan as much as informed by the comp plan.
Right, but that's, that's, that's kind of what I'm bringing up, right? Because some of, some of the solutions to no short-term rentals could be solutions to some of our affordable housing, and those are intimately involved, right? You know, we talked about all kinds of things, leased to local programs, we had, we had heard about, right, and doing some of that in Loveland Pass Village solves that problem of people not being financially tied to short-term rentals. And so, why I totally get and understand, and having a place there in Loveland Pass Village, I, I get the need, but I also want to make sure we do it right, and not just kind of do something to get it out there quick, because I think we can fix a lot of, a lot of the same problems, no, we can fix simultaneous problems, depending on what that comp plan says, so.
And I don't want to get into the debate that I'm asking to have. Like, I think, Councilmember Allen completely agree with your sentiment there, but I would just, what I'm asking for is even to have this debate, like, even to, to talk about what you're talking about.
I would feel much more comfortable, because despite the fact they are a neighborhood, they are part of Keystone too, and they can't separate themselves from that. Everyone in Keystone can actually weigh in. Certainly, the people in Loveland Pass Village have a more direct interest in what's happening there. But it, it, it's truly a community-wide question, and I would be much more comfortable having this in January or February, when we do have the comp plan, that we can refer to to defend whatever decisions we make that can inform whatever decisions we make, because the comp plan speaks of the entire community's view for what the built environment of Keystone should be.
Can we do the first meeting in January? Whatever that day is, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I, I'm assuming our comp plan will be done. I.
Regardless of if the comp plan's done, I still think.
I feel it's trying to make this decision without the input of the community, and the input of the community is through the comp plan.
Not trying to make a decision, trying to understand the options, trying to understand the toolbox.
But who's going to lay out what the, what the toolbox is and, and the options?
That's what I'm asking the town staff to do.
That's what we're going to get out of the comp plan.
We're getting part of that out of the comp.
The comp plan, you're going to talk about moratoriums on STRs in Loveland Pass Village?
Well, you just brought the toolbox up. It's stop more licensing of STRs. There's really, it's not a toolbox. It's a tool. There's, there's one tool.
So, if you're looking to the comp plan to give you a general guidance for the whole community on whether or not there should be any changes to STR licensing, it seems like it's the wrong tool for, what about this?
It's not the tool. That's an item that will inform the decision whether to use the tool, which is to ban more STRs in Loveland Pass Village. That's the only tool that I can see coming. The, the, what you're telling me is people don't want any more STRs in Loveland Pass Village.
I'm telling you, there's enough voices that have been calling for this to be a discussion.
I, I understand, but I mean, it, there's two options. We continue as we are to, if, if the board determines this truly is an issue and a problem. It's not a question of what are the tools we can use. It's, do we allow it to operate under the same rules as the rest of the town? Or do we create a specific ban on more STRs within Loveland Pass Village? They're really, I mean, can you think of any other option that would address their desire to stop STRs in Loveland Pass Village?
And that's, no, and that's why I'm asking for, somebody who.
To me, that's.
To look into this. How many STRs do we have in Loveland Pass Village? Are they all submitting monthly sales tax, which indicates that they have occupancy? Like, just look into what the impacts would be.
Yeah, but to me, what we're looking in, what the impacts of what would be, banning short-term rent, more short-term rentals. So, what we really need to have a discussion on is, we, we can't keep having six or seven meetings to make one decision. And the decision here is, does the council feel it's the right decision to ban more short-term rentals in Loveland Pass Village? Or am I mistaken there?
No, I'm asking for the ability to have a conversation and understand the options more. How many STRs do we have? What would be the impacts of this? Are we even legally allowed to do it? Which, yes, it sounds like we are able to. Like, you're asking me to make a decision on my gut right now?
No, 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 guys. Yes, sir.
Without any informed knowledge, and what I'm asking for is the knowledge to be able at least talk about this in the meeting and understand the ramifications, and understand if we would like to go forward with a moratorium or not. And I can't do that right now without the information and knowledge, because I have some neighbors who are frustrated about STRs and continually complain about it whenever I meet them. And I, the, the best thing I can do is say, "Well, the comp plan's going to handle it in six to nine months, maybe."
You completely misunderstood what I said, Councilmember Haggenow. There is a decision that you're asking for, one way or the other. You are asking for a decision. And when you make that decision, trust us, we have always given you all the information you need to make that decision. So, that public meeting in that packet, you will have the number of STRs in Loveland Pass Village, the number of non-STRs, the number of local residents, to the extent that we can determine it, and the number of long-term rental homes to the extent we can, can do it. I don't think we need to have a separate meeting above and beyond that just to say, "Here's the information." I think it should be, "Here's the information, what decision do you want to make?"
Okay, I, I think it's a nuanced difference, but I understand the difference.
And I will do that as soon as we can. I, I agree with you. It's a discussion that should happen, but the discussion shouldn't be.
Because as soon as we can, in April, people are wanting this.
Actually, I would say that this was a discussion that went back to the genesis of this town. We've, we're coming up on two years of talking about this. I'm not saying we should do it, and, and I think your point is, is that you don't even want to put that info-packed together and have a discussion with public input unless there's also an action on, the action item on the table to execute a change. I think what Councilmember Haggenow is arguing for is, let's have the information out there, let's have the public input and the specific discussion about, is this something that we should look at taking action on, and what are our options around it, without necessarily predicating that whole discussion on whether or not there's an action item on the table to actually place a moratorium.
I would agree with that assessment. Would you, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would you agree with that assessment?
That's what I understand you're asking for. You want to have a discussion with no plan of taking action.
Not necessarily. I'm sitting here without a, 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 a perspective on where I could see. If you present the data, and it's a no-brainer to put a moratorium, then I would have no problem voting for a moratorium. If you present the data, and I'm on the fence, or I think that there's an issue with it, I would have no problem voting against it. But we haven't had that ability to even talk about it.
Well, what do you see happening at the end of the meeting? At the end of the public meeting, what do you see you as a council? What, after we receive all the input on the packets that have all the information in it, what will the council do as soon as the last person spoke in, or as soon as you finish discussion?
I, I can't read their minds. I don't, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, will you just say, "Thank you," or will you say, "Let's move forward on this," or "Let's not move forward on this?"
Yeah, so, I, I think where we're trying to get to is, right, it's, I don't necessarily think it's a moratorium, black or white, yes or no. I think it's the risks, benefits, and alternatives, right? We know there's a problem, because there are, some of the constituents don't like the short-term rental situation in a, in this neighborhood. So, what can be done about that, right? There, one tool is no more STRs. There's also probably some incentive programs that we could do that would fit into, right, we had the leased to locals program that was brought up earlier, right? That might solve the problem when locals are leasing. So, so it's a, I don't think it's necessarily a decision on a moratorium. It's, we've got an issue, what are, you know, what can we do about that issue? And that all starts with gathering that data. How many short-term rentals do we have? Those kind of things. So, I know that's kind of a big thing. I, I do see that fitting into our comprehensive plan, because, right, if we're trying to build a community sense, this might be a good neighborhood to start doing that in, and short-term rentals don't necessarily fit with that community sense specifically there. So, that can be a good place to kind of work on some of these things that come out in the comp plan, but it's.
We, as a staff, need policy direction from you as a council to operate. We need decisions from you as a council. Now, the decision at the end of the meeting might be, go forward with the ban, don't go forward with the ban, or go forward with this wonderful idea we just heard. But we can't just sit around as a council and talk about things without our eye on moving beyond the discussion.
So, so, so to your point, at the end of the meeting, one of those three options could happen, no moratorium, option C, or a moratorium.
One of those three has to happen, otherwise it is a complete waste of everyone's time.
And it, it very easily could be no moratorium.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, look, you guys, I'm not weighing, I don't have a horse in this race, other than efficiency of government, not wasting our taxpayers' money, issues like that. And to me, open-ended discussions without an idea of what the next step could be is not the direction this council should take. You should have these discussions with the anticipation that the next step is a concrete step forward.
Well, identified three.
I have a comment. I, I do think they have a thought about what the next step would be. I think the only issue is, when do we have a short discussion about this? Because I, oh, two, two moments. We probably. Uh, because I, oh, two, two moments, we probably, we are kind of tight with the scheduled time, and, and the research you guys were asking you to do in advance. We've kicked it around the 25th, maybe we do use the 25th to add this to an agenda. I want to throw out one other i- issue, is that there are subsets, and I don't know how big they are, in almost every community, that no more STRs. Now, that could be a small minority, but once we do this, I think we gotta understand we're opening up the door to a lot of communities coming forward and saying, well, yeah, we'd like you to discuss ours, you know? And now, then we're going to ask you to go back and say, well, go back to the Alders, because two people came to, came to me and said, you don't want any more STRs. Then you'll have to go research, was that just a minority? So I just caution the council about what we are asking. Now, I have no problem with, with this one group, that, they, they do probably have some real issues, and I don't know. I mean, they haven't come to me, I haven't seen those issues. But I think it, it warrants a discussion. Finding the time, special year end, is kind of tough. And I'm, I'm actually probably not going to be here on the 25th, but I'll be on, online.
And if I may weigh in, actually, I think a lot of Loveland Pass Village residents might not be here on the 25th too, because.
And that's why I offered the compromise of January 13. 13, thank you.
And that seems entirely.
I think just the, the look that we're doing something is what matters, right? If we can go to the residents that complain and get.
I want to say that.
I'd like to get.
No, no, no. Okay, okay.
This is worth exploring. There's an issue out there.
The look is what matters, just giving them a voice.
And telling them January 13th is going to be the day to have their voice heard on.
The rest of the story is, if they're coming to you and say, something needs to change, this STRs are not acceptable, I think we as a council need to know what the issues behind that are. I think staff has done a lot to mitigate what we understand to be issues. So if there are issues still outstanding that either that didn't address, or that we just didn't know about, that may end up being planned safety.
I suggest we go with the, the January 13th, put it on the agenda. That means that we want to make sure that the whole community knows that this is on the agenda.
Both sides.
It's not just the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's awful to say this, but you don't know where the minority or the majority of, is it a squeaky wheel, or is it the majority of that community? So I want, I for one, want to see that and understand that.
Are you.
I agree.
Are you proposing that we hear from all potential voices in the neighborhood or in the Keystone community?
It's a good one, good.
But they're talking about that neighborhood.
Anyone, but some voices will carry more.
Worry about choose the word.
Because I think you made the point that we need to respect the taxpayers, and I think your point is the taxpayers want to talk about this, at least talk about this. And STRs are the heartbeat of this community that, that gives it its lifeblood, uh, and there is the ability to self-regulate in just about anywhere through an HOA except LPV.
That's the important part, the, the last sentence.
The way an HOA can regulate is via an amendment of their covenants, and that takes two-thirds vote of all the owners. And I think council member Martin can speak to the probability of any HOA, except for, it was one HOA in Keystone that's been managed to do that, and they're important. And that's the ranch.
So.
So it isn't just.
Bar is high.
But I think.
Bar is really.
Bar, but bar should also be high.
Okay. We can live.
Yeah.
They, they said they can live with the, the session in January, they'll be prepared with the material, it's on the agenda, let's make sure it's communicated to everybody, you know, certainly the people that talk to you, but also their friends.
But I think the council should be prepared to make some sort of decision on direction. I think it's a disservice to the community members to have an open house and then say.
Everyone.
I agree. No, we would be incumbent on us to make the decision.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's what we do.
But I for one, am still hung up on the issue of a comp plan. And I for one, right now, would be unwilling to make a decision to ban without seeing the comp plan.
This is no different than the fact that we did a, a moratorium on medicinal.
No, it's totally different, because there was.
We needed to evaluate.
Though there was a state law that required that, that to be done by the first of the year unless we put a moratorium, we put a moratorium on that to be able to have time to investigate and finally come up with.
Time to investigate and finally decide what our zoning is going to be, which is the comp plan, and that's all we're looking to do.
And of course, we input to this.
Problem is, state law required that we allow, um, natural health facilities. State law doesn't require that we ban or allow STRs. So that was why that moratorium was driven, because if we didn't have that moratorium, then the default would be, um, natural health facilities could be located.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
I just want to say, I appreciate the very spirited debate that we've had, um, and I think.
Take the win, we're all in agreement.
We're all in agreement.
Good luck.
January.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Long term, this year. My, my concern is this year.
Yes.
And you were asking for your term this year, decision when you started.
Okay.
All right. Have any other, other business? All right. In that case, can I ask you to make a motion?
Yeah.
You're good at this.
I move to go and do executive session pursuant to CRS section 24 dash 6 dash 402, section four, subsection F and L for a discussion of a personal matter involving the evaluation of the town manager. The town manager has consented to the executive session.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Move to the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Others opposed? Motion's approved, we'll be moving into executive session. For the public, there will be no further action taken after the executive session, and no other business will be conducted.